All right, it's ten AM, we'll get started. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today's July twenty-third, ten AM. And we do have a full house here today, so we have a quorum, and this meeting is called R. This time, I ask everybody to rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and these will be led by Commissioner Cooper.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lady Commission?
Yeah.
Item number three is to consider and possibly approve the July ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes presented by the county clerk, Connie Beckman.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Silk. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, authorization, I'm sorry, item number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from July ninth, twenty twenty-four, and approval of today's cash statement, presented by the county treasurer, Mrs. McWilliams. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me in the liability of one million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents. These are the vouchers for the county's bills and payroll-related expenses that were presented on the July ninth Commissioners Court. On our cash report summary, in the general checking account, we have eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. First Financial Bank, general checking, special money market, twenty-four million, five hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred six dollars and thirty-one cents. And Tech School General, three hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents, for total in cash funds of twenty-five million, seven hundred fifty thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Would you agree, Mr. Young?
Sir. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McWilliams. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills, presented by the county auditor, Mrs. Gore. Good morning.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for July tenth through the eleventh is six hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and nine cents. Pre-approved expenditures for July the seventeenth through the eighteenth are two hundred two thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are three hundred sixty-one thousand, ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents. We have one additional bill for our health dental life insurance in the amount of three hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, for a total expenditures and transfers of one million, five hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Our gross payroll for July the eleventh was six hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and seven cents, and the total transfers for that payroll was seven hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Motion approved.
Please.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Silk.
Thank you.
Number six is presentation of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three independent audit financial report by Pro LLP and acceptance by the court. Good morning, Ms. Deere, how are you?
Just fine. How is the court today?
We're doing good.
All right.
Now, I know you want me to display something, so give me a minute.
All right.
Now, we'll get that pulled up. All right, now you just have to show me where I need to go when I get there.
That's right, and I think you're, um, need to go to the PDF page eleven.
Okay, give me just a minute to see if I can, uh, sign my due.
And the pages that I'm gonna go over, I believe Angela printed them for you in a printed form.
This is not my real quick, give me a minute.
Now, I've got mine pulled up, Judge, if you want me to use mine.
Oh, Lord, here we go.
And I'll start off by thanking Angela and everybody on her staff.
There you go, put me out.
Okay, and the Treasurers Office for everything that they, um, that they, we, uh, we request a lot of information, and y'all are great in providing it, thank you. And same thing over with the Auditor's Office, they, they do a great job providing us all the information that we request, and there's quite a few, right?
There is.
All right. Um, so now we're gonna go to PDF page eleven, which should be page one that you're looking at. And this is our opinion page. This is the page that we consider the most important out of the entire audit. Um, we, you've received an unmodified opinion, that is the highest level of assurance that you can receive. There, there are no material misstatements, and all disclosures have been made in your audit. So, great job on the unmodified opinion, all right? Um, then we're gonna flip over to, this is gonna be page thirty-four on your PDF. And if, so, general fund, and if you'll just kind of go down with me, there you go, we'll look at that general fund column for total revenues. Twenty-one million, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the year. Are y'all with me? Just wanna make sure.
No, yeah.
Okay, if, this is, the printed page is gonna be printed page twenty-eight.
Okay, I didn't print that page, I printed twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. Um, all right, I may have given you the wrong page number on there. All right, um, this is, that's the total revenue for the year. Total expenditures, um, dropping down on that line is eighteen million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, one sixty-six. Uh, you've got some other financing sources and uses, there was a use of two hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, but it left you with a net change in your fund balance of an additional two million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand and thirty-four dollars, leaving you an ending fund balance of eleven million, six hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars in that fund balance. So, great job on the addition on the fund balance. Um, you know, we look at, I didn't do the equation, but looking at that, your, um, we look at your total expenditures and compare what you have down in the ending fund balance. Um, so what we consider to be a minimum amount that needs to be held in there is probably around three months, twenty-five, but that is only a twenty-five percent, that's only a minimum amount. You're well above that.
Close to fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like you're, you're above a fifty percent mark on that, so you're, you're doing good on that part. Um, so that's basically the general fund, if, looking right next to it, that column, you'll see that there is an ending balance in your road and bridge fund of one million, three hundred forty-two thousand, three forty-eight, so it's still looking pretty good on that one. And now, we're gonna flip to page, it's gonna be seventy, and it should be page sixty-four on your printed.
I did get that.
Okay.
Sixty-four, sixty-five.
All right. Uh, this is our general fund budget, and what we look at is that actual column out, and we compare it back to the final budgeted amount. So, in that variance column, and down in your expenditures, we would want to see either zero or all positive numbers over there. Negative would mean that you had gone over budget in that area. So, you'll notice that all of those numbers going on down the page, you'll see all those numbers are positive. They're, they're by, um, functions of the government, so if you'll just keep scrolling down, you'll notice all of those are gonna be positive, even when we get down to the lower sections. And then, if you'll stop right, yeah, we'll go one more. All right, on that one, for your total expenditure line item, you'll see, um, that over in that far right-hand column, you had a variance of one million, six hundred seventy-one thousand, two seventy-one. That's the variance that the, the expenditures came in under budget in the general fund. So, uh, great job on that, looking at your, down at the net change to fund balance. If you'll look in that final column, if you go three to the left right there, that's six hundred and thirteen, six fifty-two, you see that, Judge? Yeah, okay. That means that what, that final column is telling me what you, what you meant to spend was six hundred and thirteen thousand out of your fund balance, but what you ended up doing was adding to your fund balance by two hundred and seventy-six, uh, two, two million, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine twenty. So, that means that that budget, you really did a great job on the budget, coming in way above.
Well, I can hear that.
Yes, sir.
Now, the, uh, when you say that we meant to spend this much out of the fund balance, that has to do with some budget amendments we made through the year?
Yes, that is correct.
Where we said we're gonna use fund balance to pay for something, whatever it was, and it added up to six thirteen?
Yes.
Okay. Got you. Where do we go from here?
That's basically the three most important pages out of the audit, but now, I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have. We had one, um, one new, um, GASB change that we looked at for the year. That was with any kind of information, technology subscriptions that you might have, and I don't think we added, we ended up, yes, we did, we added a small amount where it says in that other financing sources and uses. You'll see that we added, um, an amount there, which that is similar to, if, if you remember how we do the capital outlay for Roden Bridge, or whenever you buy a piece of equipment, if you're, we know that the county didn't actually get the proceeds from any kind of a loan, but to show that on an accounting side, we have to show the revenue that was received for whatever that equipment was, and then show that capital outlay, so that's a similar entry. Um, I would have recorded a revenue for that as well, and then record that as an expense.
And that's for these notes that are over here?
Um, that's for, the, the one that's right underneath it, where it's showing subscriptions.
Here?
Yes, that is, and then back in that eighty-one thousand is the actual amount. Um, that is basically any information, technology subscriptions that the county would have subscribed to during the year, and we would have had to add that back onto your, to your financials.
That's software license and support?
Yes, yes. Last year, we ended up doing where it says leases, anything, there was a lease, um, whether the county, yes, county paid a lease, or you, or somebody's paying you for a lease, those had to be implemented last year. So, that's what that line above it is that says any leases. Uh, so any notes that you might have on any road and bridge material, or, I'm sorry, road and bridge equipment, any, any kind of sheriff's office has any, I, I can't remember what the detailed part of it was. Any notes that are being paid is in that next lineup.
So, on the script, it impelled, nothing illegal or inappropriate.
Everything looked, looked very well. Very good.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to accept the audit report for two thousand twenty-three as presented, and seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any other discussion regarding this? Ms. Deere, anything else you want to say?
Nope, did it great, everybody looks good, and so, yeah, very happy with everything the way that it turned out, so.
We are very blessed with the auditing team that we have here, and we appreciate all the hard work that y'all do to make the audit happen, and that goes for our county auditors and also our independent auditors. It's a lot of work, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, and anytime during the year, if you need me, just give me a call, I'm always happy to help you. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Did you have any discussion? Anybody? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Number seven is the present, presentation of list of lands and lots delinquent as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for the taxes of two thousand twenty-three in Harden County, and requesting the court to execute the certificate of Commissioners Court for credit for the two thousand twenty-three delinquent taxes shown thereon, as requested by the Honorable Sherwood Cook, tax assessor collector, for the next six, uh, five months, is it? How long is it? Five months and two weeks?
That sounds wonderful.
Something like that, I bet it does. All right, good morning, Ms. Cook.
Good morning, thank you. Uh, this is the yearly thing that we do, I, I didn't print the two thousand six hundred ninety-one pages. So, if anybody wants that, we can give that for you. But this is just asking for the, uh, the liability of the delinquent taxes for the twenty-three tax year. And the total was, uh, four million, nine twenty-seven, eight sixty-one, zero, one, I believe y'all got that.
But just the Harden County is, is, uh, one point six million, right?
Correct.
But we know that, uh, there's hard diligent work being done to collect those, and we appreciate that.
Yes, sir, and I have this ticket for signature.
All right, any questions or discussions regarding this, if not, will entertain a motion?
Please, Commissioner.
Sir.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper to approve as presented, and to execute the certificate as presented as well. And that second was by Commissioner Cook?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. The next item is also Ms. Cook, and it's a presentation of comparisons and tax selections for the tax years two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three in Harden County, and all jurisdictions, and then that's Ms. Cook.
And the first is the comparison for Harden County, I hope you, you got this copy. Um, it shows your tax year twenty-two, uh, ending, um, one, uh, collections percentage, one point zero zero eight five, that was the year twenty-two. As of June the thirtieth, the, for this year, point nine eight three four. That's for Harden County.
And that says of June thirtieth?
Yes, sir.
Typically, y'all will collect a little bit more before September thirtieth, year to that.
Yes, sir. And then, for the all jurisdictions, um, tax year twenty-two, total was one point zero zero three four, for twenty-three, point nine 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 three. Collections coming slowly this year, there were so many changes last year. All the legislation changes, what you see in, um, the next report.
All right, that's the presentation on it, is there any discussion or questions regarding that report? All right, we'll move on to number nine, and that is presentation of the refund report for December two thousand twenty-three to June twenty, uh, of two thousand twenty-four. Again, that's Ms. Cook.
Refunds, uh, you know, you all know the situation that we've been in this year, with, uh, tax statements went out, and then we realized that there were corrections that had to be made with the legislation that went into effect immediately. Um, and as you see, the county's refunds, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine fifty-seven, seventy. Um, then the total that we have refunded, one million, nine hundred seventy thousand, seven fourteen point six eight. The school districts was the most of that, their total was one million, six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty-four cents, which was due to the legislation of, uh, going from the forty thousand to the one hundred thousand dollar. And that was with the glitch in the software that came over to us, so. We still have a lot of refund checks that we have issued that are out, causing bookkeeping issue, but we're working on that every day, so.
I'm still waiting on mine.
Waiting on yours.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else waiting on theirs? I'll make a list.
Well, we sure appreciate that information.
Yes, sir, I just wanna, I know that the refunds have been a big thing in all of the information too, so we could see how it may affect this county and the school district.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for all that we'll do.
Yes, sir.
For another five months and two weeks.
Who's counting?
Item number ten, consider and possibly approve revised Harden County Personnel Policy as requested by Ms. Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director. And, uh, that new policy has been being worked on for a better part of a year. I know Ms. Harrington sent that out to everybody a few weeks ago to give you time to look over it. Actually, the court got it before everyone else, just to make sure that the members of the Commissioners Court had time to provide any input to Melinda, and I think there were a few minor changes that had to be made, and then it went out to all elected officials and department heads. So, Melinda, did you receive any input when you sent it out to everybody?
Um, no, sir, mostly, it was just a couple of questions on, um, things that departments already have, um, in policy now, um, to do with the pre-employment screenings.
Okay.
And, um, those were answered, and everybody was happy with the answers they received. Um, I think the biggest change to this was the longevity, um, policy that, um, I put in here. Did everybody have a chance to read that and review it? Does anybody have any questions or suggestions for changes?
Did you get an explanation?
The schedule is the next item, right?
We got it corrected.
That's, yes, sir, that's for the schedule.
This is correct?
No.
The policy's correct, but not the schedule, is that right?
Yes, the wording of it.
Okay, which will be the next item. Does everybody feel like they had enough time to review it and, and to make sure that? We would like to adopt a policy that we don't have to come back and amend several times, you know, throughout the year. Amendments are gonna have to happen, it just happens, but, uh, does everybody feel like they had enough time to review this? And are y'all ready to take action today? Not just the members of the court, but any elected officials or department heads? Does anybody need more time before we take action? Yeah, you know, and I think we're ready to take action, if y'all are. Sir, I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, and a second by Commissioner Cooper to approve the Harden County Personnel Policy. Uh, would we be okay, uh, making this, do we need to make it effective today, or do we need to wait till October first?
I prefer to make it effective October first, due to the pre-employment screenings and what's budgeted, and then also, um, doing to the outside audit and things that we have to do with all of the changes that came with this. It sort of just helps everything flow.
And then, uh, you pay too, right?
And the longevity pays as well.
So, is that okay if we include that in the motion and the second? Effective October first?
Yes.
All right, and the motion was made by Kirkendall, seconded by Cooper, correct? All right, any other discussion regarding this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Melinda, I know you had a lot of work that you did on that, I know you worked the tax on to get some answers that we needed to make sure everything was just right and legal, and so, thank you for all the work that you did on that. And thanks to everybody who provided comments to her, uh, after she sent out the drafts. Number eleven, consider and possibly approve a longevity pay schedule for all eligible Harden County personnel as requested by Ms. Harrington, Human Resources Director. And if everybody will take a look at that, Ms. Harrington told me about ten minutes before court, to let me know about a correction that needs to be made to the bottom of that, and Melinda, if you'll go ahead and present that?
Um, the wording on here is incorrect. It should say longevity pay is paid at a rate of fifteen dollars per month for every year of service with Harden County.
And then, um, the policy itself states that it starts after somebody has been here twenty-four months, as of October first of that year, correct?
Yes, sir.
In actual policy, so that doesn't need to be on the schedule?
No, sir, it should, it doesn't need to be on the policy, it's also in the policy that if we have a rehire come in, they will start receiving their longevity pay once the new budget year starts.
And it does say that here, refer to Harden County Personnel Policy Section six point one one on page forty-eight, so all of that's in there.
Yes, sir.
We just need to make this change to the schedule. And, uh, Melinda brought it up to me yesterday, she was concerned since we don't have a cap on the longevity pay, she had stopped it at forty because, uh, nobody has over thirty-seven or thirty-eight years, is that right?
Yes, sir.
But if we ever get to a position where somebody has more than forty, then she'll change this to whatever that needs to be, and we'll adopt a new schedule. Right?
Correct.
And so, if this is adopted today, it'll be effective October first, twenty twenty-four, so. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, and a second by Commissioner Young to adopt the longevity pay schedule as amended by the Human Resources Director effective October first, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion on this?
Judge, I'd just like to commend the court, uh, Melinda, Salary Committee, everybody took a good look at this. Uh, I think it's been a long time coming for Harden County.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think it's gonna go a long way for morale and retention, so I appreciate everybody who worked hard on it.
I'll second that too, thank you. Commissioner Cooper, I know y'all did some work on this earlier, uh, and the commission just thanked y'all, I just wanna add that. Thank y'all for addressing this, and all of the work that Salary Committee has done. I kinda think and hope that that's over with, I know that, uh, y'all had to make some changes to kinda get people on an even field across the board, and we, we appreciate all that was done to get to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consider acceptance of the audited financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for Harden County Emergency Services District number five and District number six, and the compiled financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for Village Mills, Emergency Services District number eight. Ms. Gore, have you had time to review those?
I have, and everything's in order.
Perfect. Do we have those in our folders? Are they electronic or do you?
Electronic. They stopped providing them in the folders.
Okay. If anybody needs one printed out, uh, this letter, Melinda will show it for you?
Could you just forward it to? I may have it, but just in case.
We'll do. Any other discussion?
Certainly.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? Are we missing anybody, or is that everyone? That's all of our YSD financial reports for this year. Thanks to all of them, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider approval of request from Mr. Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator, to authorize the county judge to execute DR dash four three three two Hurricane Harvey sub grant award contract with the Texas, that should be Division of Emergency Management, otherwise known as TDM, outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR four three three two, Project two through three, Phase Two, which is the construction phase, of the Harden County Hurricane Safe Room, in the amount of three million, two hundred eleven thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars. This includes, or will include, a local cost share of eight hundred two thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars, less the Senate Bill seven reimbursement in the amount of six hundred two thousand, one twenty-nine, twenty-five, resulting in a final local cost share in the amount of two hundred thousand, seven hundred nine dollars and seventy-five cents. This, of course, is a project that's been being worked on since around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. I think we got the award later, what, about six months ago?
Yes, sir.
And there were some changes that had to be made to the contract, which we finally received, I think it was last third-year Friday.
Yes, sir.
And I heard somebody make a motion, seconded. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? Anything you wanna add?
Oh, thank y'all.
So, uh, do we feel like we can build it for that amount?
Uh, we'll see, we're gonna have to do a, um, new cost, uh, analysis on it, and, uh, go back to the drawing board on, on some stuff. Uh, we also had the ARPA funds that, that y'all graciously set aside, so, uh, we'll end up having about a, uh, five million dollar project that, that currently, so hopefully, we can get it built for five million dollars.
Only, uh, Tupper, on the ARPA funds, is that the six hundred and two, one twenty-nine, or is that the total, uh, eight hundred?
No, sir, the ARPA funds are completely separate. Uh, the grant match for this is the eight oh two, Senate Bill seven, uh, for all Harvey projects applies to this, so they're gonna pay, uh,
Six hundred and two thousand.
Six hundred and two thousand, I was gonna say the percentage. So, the two hundred, the two hundred will come out of county, will have to come out of county funds.
And we've had that budgeted for the past few years at two hundred thousand even, but you'll see when I talk about the budget in a minute that I increased it to include the entire amount, the two hundred thousand, seven oh nine, seventy-five. Senate Bill seven came out, um, after Harvey, and that's where the, uh, legislature agreed to help all counties with their match in cities as well. And so, that's why the, the six, uh, six oh two, one twenty-nine, twenty-five will come from the state, and we've had no problem collecting those, sometimes we have to wait about sixty or ninety days, or sometimes maybe even longer to get that money. But we've gotten it on all of our Harvey projects, and we'll get it on this one as well. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Tupper, for all the work on that, and all the extra work you fix, have to do to make that happen.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, and Clay, I don't wanna forget Clay, he's done a lot of work on it as well, and.
Not as much as he had.
No, that's true, but you're probably fixing to start. Yes, sir.
I heard it, especially go to Beaumont, it's cheap.
Is that right? All in favor? Oh, man. All right, number fourteen, consider and possibly authorize a purchasing agent to sell a color generator, serial number two three one, one four five four, located at the old county hospital, or annexed building to the city of Sillsby, in the amount of five thousand dollars, pursuant to local government code two six two, point one five two. This was previously approved by Commissioners Court in September, uh, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, to sell, utilizing Renee Bates auctioneers, and if this item is approved, then that, uh, prior authorization is rescinded.
Certainly.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, to sell the generator to the city of Sillsby. Any discussion? Aaron, you and I decided how to come up on that amount, that's, that's about what it's gonna cost to get it disconnected and get it out of here. Aaron, you and I decided how to come up on that amount, that's that's about what it's gonna cost to get it uh disconnected and get it out of here.
Yes, sir, that that is what it costs to get it disconnected, they will be responsible for removing it, but it is disconnected at this time.
Okay.
And that's roughly what it costs to to take care of all that.
Sounds good, and they agree with the price and we're good to go once this is approved?
Yes, sir, once it's approved, they've already got uh city council approval to purchase it, uh we'll create an invoice, uh get that transaction done and get it removed from that property.
Anything you wanna add?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider approval of request by Ms. Sims to present recommendation from the Evaluation Committee concerning proposals received for Phase Two, which is construction of the Harden County Lompton Detention Pond Project under Hazard Mitigation Project DR four three three two dash zero two three, I'm sorry, two three two, and possibly award to successful firm or take other action as the court deems necessary. Ms. Sims?
Proposals were opened on July third, twenty twenty-four at two P M. in the Purchasing Department. Stacy Eckert and Pat Boyett were present. The Evaluation Committee is Steve Clark, Aaron Tupper, and Clay Woodward. We only received one proposal from Langford Community Management, and so my recommendation is to, since we only received one, to revisit it or resubmit it for proposals.
And is that because due to inadequate competition?
Yes, sir.
Some, I was presented.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young to accept the recommendation made by a purchasing agent, and that means to reject all bids and go back out for proposals?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cooper?
Are we uh, being that this is a joint project with Lompton, are we, I know Steve was on the committee, are are they good with that? Or or have you advised him that that's what you was gonna recommend?
I believe Aaron Tupper talked to him and you, sir.
Yes, sir, I advise him, he he's great with that, being the fact that there was only one person that bid on it, thank you.
Yeah, and just a little further, Missy reached out to some of the others that normally do bid on our grant administration, and uh one of them was out of town, so when he got back, the deadline had already passed, and I think the other one had got lost in somebody's email or something, and they didn't get it. And there might have been one or two others kinda had similar circumstances, so. I think if we go back out, of course, we hope that this firm revisits and uh we get some others so we can look at them and compare. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And just so everybody knows, Missy don't just put that in the paper, she sends it to everybody that normally bids on that, and anybody that ever calls and says, hey, we wanna make sure we're on your bid list, she sends it to all of them. Sometimes that person leaves and she's still sending it to the old address because they don't notify her. So that that kinda happens sometimes too. Just didn't wanna think that we stick it in the paper and feel by the luck of the draw. Number sixteen, consider and possibly authorize a purchasing agent to solicit proposals for grant administration concerning the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR four three three two, Project two through three, Phase two, Harden County Hurricane Safe Room, and if approved, appoint Evaluation Committee to make a recommendation to Commissioners Court. Are you gonna recommend the same committee that's doing the other, or do you have a new name?
It's a little bit different.
Sure.
Aaron Tupper, Clay Woodward, and Ms. Angie Smith.
Perfect, sounds great. I have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to solicit those proposals and the, uh, point the Evaluation Committee presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we already have an agreement in place with the uh engineer for that project, correct? Uh, we need his grant administrator and we can start moving forward.
Yes.
Okay. Who's the engineer? Who's the engineer on that?
It's, we don't have an engineer, we have an architect on that one.
Oh.
Architect services, so it is.
The Beach?
The Beach, yes.
Alright, thank you. They have their own inside engineer, right?
Yes, sir, they they have engineers and all that.
Perfect. Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider and possibly authorize a county judge to sign Texas General Land Office Construction Change Order number one regarding contract number two zero dash zero six five dash one four five dash C eight fifty-seven. This is the Saratoga Drainage Improvements Project, Commissioner Young?
Uh, yes, so there was a few um changes we needed to make, some culverts that were not on the the design that needed to be changed out, and then there were some things like stabilization on the light poles and stuff that they didn't have to do, so we ended up with a little bit more money. So I found um just an extenuation of the original project and we were able to do a change order for that, so.
And it's all be covered by the next one, do you think?
Correct, it's all within the allocated amount.
Alright, you wanna make a motion?
I have, yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eighteen, consider and possibly approve the request by Mr. Alex Parker for a plan administrator to reduce the cost of the Harden County commercial, commercial industrial development permit fee from three hundred thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand regarding Blackpin Pipeline Compressor Station consisting of ten point one acre located in Batson, Texas, in precinct three. Morning, Mr. Parker?
Good morning, sir.
So this is a large project, this is that um uh pump station?
It's a compressor station.
Compressor station, uh I know we've had another gentleman here a few times talking about a tax abatement, but that's a different firm that's been coming in.
Yes, sir.
And but that's the uh, the uh location that we're talking about. And so they requested, uh, the permit fee would be three hundred thirty thousand, they requested a reduction, and the amount they're requesting is thirty-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Young, that's in your precinct? How do you feel about that large reduction in cost?
Um, I think that's significant, and I think that um I would go for something maybe around a hundred thousand for the permitting. I think they're gonna request um some culvert work on some rural roads and stuff. Commissioner Kirkendall has the majority of the roads that they'll be crossing and um potentially damaging at some point, but um.
That's what the pipeline itself though, right?
Correct, yeah. Um, and I think they did actually change the location of the compressor station from what it looks like in here, it's not going to be up in Thicket anymore, it looks like between Batson and Saratoga, so um I think a hundred thousand is fair for a permit um for a project of this size.
Does anybody hear from Blackpin? Okay.
So I assume, uh, Mr. Parker, that this fee is already set and it's a percentage of something, correct?
Yes, sir.
We already have our fees set.
Exactly.
They're asking for a reduction in the fee. And here again, this is, this is the pipeline company, not the company that's gonna uh ask for a tax abatement on a compressor station. Uh, but we already have our fees, I guess the point I'm trying to make is if we're gonna do, and and in the long run, Harden County is gonna uh receive plenty of taxes off of this company on whatever uh goes through that line, but there if we, if we have smaller companies that come in and request a fee reduction, have you ever done that to your knowledge?
Just a school.
Okay. I don't, I don't think we're gonna make exceptions for uh requests for uh something that we already have set in stone. A reduction first on a smaller scale is what I'm getting at.
Yes.
On our fees, so I don't think we should show partiality to, and I'm with Commissioner Young, this is a, a, a huge, I don't know what percentage it is, but I had tried to figure it, but.
Tell us, I know it was on your email, but tell us how this uh three hundred thirty comes to be, uh, because I don't see it in our package.
It's based on the uh construction cost. The construction cost is extremely high on this project. Um, the uh, it's a percentage of it, it's based on the first uh five hundred thousand, it is two thousand dollars, and then it's two dollars for every one thousand after that.
Are they still gonna be requesting a tax abatement? I know they had planned to come back way before now and and ask for that, but they haven't done so, have they mentioned anything about that to you?
No, sir, this is a totally different part of the, the structure that I'm talking to you.
Well, yes, sir. Go ahead. My thoughts are, if if we're gonna, if you start giving variances, then we're gonna have to give variances every time. And if that's the case, maybe we revisit the policy. I can't support uh taking it real low because of uh South Hampton being in my precinct. They've always been community partners, they've always paid what is needed, we've never given them a variance. So anything uh that is not, one, if it's a variance, my question is, are we gonna have to do that every time? And so right now, I'm a firm note on reducing it. Uh, could I consider something else? Nothing less than fifty percent, and I'm doing that on behalf of the people that I represent itself.
So with that in mind and and what uh Commissioner Young has said, I would assume the action that this court takes today is to reject this request and not offer them a hundred thousand, let them come back and ask. Does, would that?
Yeah, I would think so.
It's basically just us to to accept thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Melinda.
I would not accept thirty-five thousand. Um, I think with it based off of the construction price, you know, each project's going to be different, and um they have a lot of permits to get, this is just one of the permits that they're going to have to get, so I wouldn't mind working with them. Three hundred thousand is is a lot.
Well, just like I said, we definitely wanna work with them because we want their business, we want that land, that land's gonna come through and we're gonna benefit from it, but we also have to take in consideration our other people that supply them for uh for these things.
Well, we just did a, an apartment complex that paid almost that much in in permit fees, so um I would not accept thirty-five thousand.
So what we would do is uh, as long as there's not a motion, this item would just die. And uh what I would say do from there is uh if you would stay in contact with Commissioner Young and talk to the firm, and if they wanna come up with a more reasonable request, I would think that might, we might entertain that. Uh, for me personally, if they're gonna still request a tax abatement, then I'm not sure I would uh entertain much of a reduction in the permit fee.
Yes, sir.
That's my personal take on it. Uh, and that doesn't mean they're gonna get the tax abatement, but if they say, hey, we're not gonna worry about the tax abatement anymore, but we really need this, I would sure consider a reduction. And I think the half figure was mentioned somewhere along the way, and I might would consider that. That's my opinion.
Judge, do you recall, I was under the impression, and I might be wrong, that there's two different companies total, was Blackpin the one that actually asked us for an abatement?
No, it's their, uh, it's a firm for them called Katie Andrews.
But they were working for Black?
Yes, sir, and even I think the contact you have on this is not a Blackpin person, it's somebody else that they contract with, correct?
It's Norfleet.
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 Yes, sir.
And uh, something else I noticed is in the, all the information we've got from Katie Andrews regarding the uh value of this compressor station, based on this permit fee and the information that Alex has discussed with me, I think it's about twice the amount of the information I've seen in that paperwork that they submitted to us, the value of it. So uh, anyway, it's a lot. Um, you know, on behalf of the citizens and and everybody at Harden County, this is a big deal for us to get this, and we don't wanna lose it. Uh, but at the same time, I sure couldn't go for a thirty-five thousand dollar permit fee on a normal three thirty, three hundred thirty thousand. And nobody's here to even discuss it with us, so. If there's no motion, we will move on. Anybody wanna make a motion? Alright, if not, I make team die due to lack of motion. Thanks, Mr. Parker. Number nineteen, consider and possibly approve request by Mr. Parker for a plan administrator to end warranty period for tranquility for Stage Two and place into the county road bridge maintenance system. This is in uh whose precinct?
Mine.
Commissioner Cooper, go ahead.
I'm moving that we accept this, I have uh been in contact uh with Mr. Parker, as well as my foreman has walked this and everything is is uh ready to go, so I move it with.
Second.
Excuse me. You have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty, is discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public? I have a few things. Uh, first, uh, Mr. Tupper and I met with the uh theme representative currently assigned to uh our area, and we do still have quite a few people coming into the Disaster Recovery Center, Recovery Center over at the uh Annex. I think it's generally about uh eighteen to twenty people a day, sometimes more, sometimes less. So we made the decision to leave that open, it seems it's uh still the need to the public. And we're gonna leave that open for the foreseeable future, which to me means probably at least another four weeks. Once that foot traffic dies down, then we'll make the decision on when to close it, and I'll make sure everybody's notified of that. Uh, based on the information that we've received and that we've seen regarding Hurricane Barrel, there's not enough damages in Harden County, which is a good thing uh for us to receive an individual assistance declaration, it's a bad thing for the few people that have had major damages, right now there's two verified homes uh that have major or substantial damages, I know the E R is still evaluating those, and there may be a few more. And as of yesterday, the decision is that there will be no individual assistance declaration for Harden County. Um, I know that everybody, Jefferson Orange and Jasper County have all received one, they've got uh quite a few more damages than we have from that storm. So uh, like I said, it's a good thing and a bad thing, there's a few people that need assistance, and as of right now, it's not available to them. There is SBA assistance available, and uh it's not to rebuild, but it's for uh repairs and things like that that need to be made, we did get that declaration for SBA assistance for for Barrel. And uh, we've been pushing information out and we'll continue to do that. This Saturday, the Gift of Life has their men screening, and that is from uh, I think it's from nine A M. to four P M., so uh that's over at the Annex and the Health Department, just wanted to remind everybody of that. Uh, we had discussed a special meeting on July the thirtieth, and I just wanna make sure, uh, Commissioner Cooper, I know can't make that, but he's okay with us meeting if everybody else is available, so is that still good for everyone, ten o'clock next Tuesday? Main reason for that meeting will be for me to present the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget and ask you to accept it so that I can file that with the perk and get it advertised on the website, and that starts our clock on our public hearings on tax rates and the budget and things like that. We should have our certified values this Thursday, and I know that Shirley and her office could be working very diligently to give us our tax rates, and I'm hoping that we see those Friday, but if it's not Friday, we'll see them when we see them. Right?
Thursday's weekend.
Yes, ma'am, and we appreciate that very much. Last but not least, I do uh have, I had sent out a uh draft of the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget to everyone last Thursday, and uh it's not on the agenda to discuss, but I think we can discuss it, discuss it under this uh item, discussion only. Does anybody have any issues, or did y'all see any problems with the proposed uh overdraft that I sent out?
Judge, I hadn't really had a chance to review it yet, so I'm gonna go make the rest of this.
Okay. A few things I'd like to bring up, if if y'all will uh let me do so, I know everybody's ready to go, and I won't talk long. There are some increases, uh, in the Road and Bridge Fund, uh, the increase there to that fund was two hundred thirty-two thousand and eight dollars. Uh, the ninety, I'd say ninety-seven percent of that increase, maybe more, is the uh three percent wage increase and the longevity pay and the increase to health insurance. In the general fund, the total increase there is one million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars. Again, the majority of the increase there is the three percent cost of living increase, the longevity pay, the increase to our general liability insurance, our health insurance. And then um, I do have some other notes here about increases, uh, the twenty-four thousand dollar increase to the agri budget for rent of the building. Then we have uh a rather large increase to the Harden County Appraisal District in the amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand, which I am, uh, have been in some uh email discussions with the new chief appraiser, and I do intend to uh discuss it with him thoroughly after he gets all the certified values out to everyone, I know he's tied up with that right now. But I'd uh would like to get a good explanation from him on the large increase. Uh, in fact, from last year to this year, it's a thirty-nine percent increase, that was the most of the increase, and then from this year to next year, it's about a twelve percent increase. So uh, you'll see that we budgeted five hundred seventy-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-four. The actual amount that they intend to bill us, I believe, was seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, that's the thirty-nine percent increase. It's never, we've never seen that kind of increase from the appraisal district, so I'm trying to get an explanation on that, and once I have it, I'll provide it to you.
Judge, when you talk to her, when you provide it, uh, can you come to the court?
Sure.
And let's get it on record for the public.
Yeah, my last can come here.
Sure will.
And I hope to do that always thirteen. If not, I'll let you know when it's gonna happen. There's other miscellaneous increases here and there, um, one thing I did increase uh by quite a bit was the uh, there's an item in the uh, Mr.'s court budget in the general fund. We have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for uh grants, grant matches. I increased that a hundred thousand because we have this large C V B G mitigation project that we may have to pay upfront and then get reimbursed. I'm hoping that we don't, and in fact, if there's any cuts that have to be made, that's an item, but I've identified that I'll make cuts. We won't know that until we see what those uh tax rates are gonna be, and and then that's when it deter, that's when it's determined what our ad valorem revenues will be. Angela or Candace, can y'all think of any other large increases and expenditures that I didn't hit on?
No, just a second.
Y'all have any questions or anything that y'all wanna bring up regarding the general fund? Jury fund was a very slight increase, it was forty-nine thousand, that's mostly because of the uh jury. Jury fund was a very slight increase. It was forty-nine thousand. That's mostly because of the uh jury, I increased, increased the petted jury line item in the three fifty-six because they're having so many jury trials. Based on the history of that kind of, it needed to come up some, and so that amount, I think, was forty-nine thousand. There was also a four thousand dollar increase to another line item. And then in the interest in sinking fund, that is actually decreasing three thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars, and that's just because the uh Angela threatened from that, and the note uh on the interest goes down, that's the payment on the uh on the uh Annex Building, and each year, as each year goes on, the interest amount comes down. Is that right?
I believe it's the um the principal that's going down.
Okay.
And it um, it would be paid off in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, we look forward to that. It seemed like a long time ago when we first did that announcement last year.
I got the uh information, Judge, that you and I spoke about. Uh I don't have it with me, I'm sorry, but uh I do have an information that's gonna be presented to the court on the meeting next week that I won't be here from uh uh T C D R S in reference to those uh losses that Angela had, you know, but that's why I have that.
Okay. And um you want us to discuss it while you're out or you wanna talk about it when you come back and all this?
Fine, discuss while I'm out.
Judge, Ralph will be here next week too.
Oh, okay, good.
I thought I had copied you an email, but yeah, I'm sorry.
If you did, I missed it, so uh.
He told me he would be here and I told him I wouldn't be able to be here, so I have the information.
You could always zoom in from wherever you are. I'm sure you will.
I probably wouldn't be able to.
Just wanna throw it out there.
Yeah.
Uh the tax, I mean, the uh retirement rate in the proposed budget was left the same as uh the previous four or five years that we've had, fifteen point three one. So and I don't see a need to reduce that. We plan to keep that the same. But that'll all be talked about in a week. Any other questions or anything that you'd like me to be prepared for when I submit the budget to everybody formally next Tuesday? You can let me know now or you can always let me know here in the next few days. Just try to give me some notice so I can be ready. I'll be working on it hard and heavy this Friday once we get our, our numbers and through the weekend. All right, does anybody else have any other discussion only line items or I, I mean items or any uh announcements that you'd like to make? You're gonna hear me talk, is that right?
Yeah.
I have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. You have a great, safe rest of the week.